Larry, what do you have for time?
I'm at nine.
Okay.
Those were just all the graph, all those things I had in the file for you.
What's that?
Computer.
You're on.
I was just trying to give.
Oh, we live right now?
Evolution, if you will.
I can, uh, I might as well, we'll close it up while store then, yeah, yeah. So we got, uh,
now folks here will do the pledge allegiance tonight. No, all right. Would you, uh, join us with a pledge allegiance, please? All two of you out there.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did a good job on that one.
Yeah, we didn't have any feedback. No feedback, they don't.
We were in sync. All right. Okay. With that, um, I will call the April twenty fourth, uh, special meeting of the town of Demers, got a select board to order. Um, we have some discussions this evening on, uh, a couple of capital projects. Before I get started, uh, Anton, are you here for a, a public comment or anything? You just, okay. Yep. I was just gonna, I was gonna go to you first, if that's, yeah, no problem though. Um, we won't dive right into it.
Sure.
All right. Who wants to start?
Um, let's give you a quick, uh, overview, which most of you, I think know, and Andrew is on, uh, as well. So we can give you, um, more of the technical rundown of, of the Egypt road in particular.
Yeah, we've got Andrew Heidrick on, uh, hi, Andrew.
So with, on, uh, was it Thursday? I think I went and rode that morning with, uh, Vaughn and Seth for a little bit to look at places they might want to shim. In addition to what was identified, um, in one of those pages I had printed off for you there. And the project has had a couple of different iterations, if you will, of scope. Um, but towards the middle of that packet, there was a aerial photo that went out in December and identified, and that's when we identified we were going to reclaim a few sections and that there'd be, after that, there'd still be a few shit areas to shim. Um, and so we were looking at that to add some more. So I went back and looked at the scope to see what it was called for originally for shim and then what would be extra. Um, and then real, you know, noticed that there was supposed to be a full milling of the road. So an average of an inch along that in the whole length, um, with the exception of whatever we had just reclaimed.
But yeah, minus the reclaimed.
Um, so called Vaughn, uh, asked him about that, the status of that before they put any shim down. Um, and he either called Seth or called Andrew. I'm not sure which, um, in which case the contractor and our engineer had had a discussion about, um, how best to proceed on that, whether they do come in and mill it before they put the shim down or the alternative that, um, the contractor and our engineer came up with was to run a shim across the length and the areas that hadn't been reclaimed. And that it would, it would be able to accomplish what we needed to, to be able to get the road pitched to what we needed to fill in the ruts that had been formed over the years. Um, you know, and be able to get a grade on that road that's needed. Um, so when you put the surface down, it's, it's not going to fail. Um, so I don't know if Andrew wants to share a little bit more on and give you some technical, um, perspective on that.
I got a question. Yes. What I understand is that the contract called for the milling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so you're saying that the engineer and the contractor decided to change that?
It was decided to change it. I'm not sure how it came into Andrew, but, um,
How can they change it without getting back to us? Well, I guess, I guess let's hear from Andrew and then, then we can put the questions to him. Cause I got plenty.
Whoop, he's gone.
Yeah. Can you, can you guys hear me? My camera doesn't seem to be working.
We thought you ran out of the room, Andrew. Yeah.
Perfect, perfect. All right. Um, so, so yes, um, we have reviewed this. So originally we looked at the road situation. Uh, we had planned on kind of doing a one inch, um, milling to the entire length of road. Um, and then on top of the milling, we were going to shim a few areas uh, that required some, you know, elevation adjustments and kind of to fill in some of the core sections. Um, what happened along the way though, is we converted it to doing some, um, full depth reclamation in a few sections. So as this project has evolved and went out for bid or the bid amendment, we included several sections of full depth reclamation, um, which is the twelve inches of material removed mixed in with the asphalt. And we, and we targeted, um, on the plans, we targeted two sections of road. There's about thirty-two hundred feet of road that we had proposed to do a full depth reclamation. Um, in addition to that, there was a, a poor section of probably, uh, another hundred, hundred and fifty feet of road uh, that really needed to be, uh, full depth reclamation that they, they hit while the, the groomer, you know, the a recycler was right there. So there was a little nether a recycler was right there. So there was a little nether section that we sort of added in, uh, as they went through that. Um, so after seeing that, knowing that they were moving forward to kind of repairing the rest of the road, uh, we reviewed it with the contractor, the fact that if we go and mill an inch off the entire road, um, what's going to happen is, is you're going to have like an irregular, uh, milling. So those milling machines, they set down their certain width, uh, and they're just going to mill down basically an inch of material. There's going to be areas, especially on this road, that it was going to be untouched with the milling, so you wouldn't be able to get down to the full depth due to the surface irregularities. Um, so again, working and talking with the contractor, it was advised, um, we basically determined that adding additional asphalt to this road would be more beneficial than removing an inch of asphalt and then uh, repaving over that. So we're proposing to put an inch and a half surface on this road to begin with. Uh, we were going to mill an inch, uh, so it would have added about a half an inch of surface, uh, in most areas. Um, so by switching from milling um, to asphalt shim, we're going to add a little more than half an inch to the entire road area um, that needed that milling to begin with. Um, in addition to some of these areas that we were already calling for shim, so in some sections, uh, we're going to add about an inch of extra pavement in addition to that one and a half inches of surface overlay uh, that we had, uh, discussed and originally agreed on. So uh, again, the benefit of that is to fill in the low spots, address some of the irregularities in the surface, uh, and then give more structure to that road than removing it. Um, it will be tacked, it will be placed, uh, with a tack under it, a tack over it before they put the surface down. Um, and to me, that just seemed to make more sense to fill that, uh, that, that road there.
Still totally confused, um. Did you come back to the town at all to get approval to do this?
No, no, we, we have not been back to the town to get approval of this. Um, there was no definitive answer to kind of have them proceed with it. It was more of a discussion uh, that we all had, that this made sense. Um, and there was no official authorization to proceed with that. So, uh, what, what they have done is they've kind of gone beyond uh, where we were. They haven't done it all. Uh, they had started uh, to move forward with some of the overlay, but, uh, unfortunately that's on Hagar. I know Andy and I had discussed it, we had reviewed it, and, uh, he indicated that he needed to talk to the board to get any official authorization. So, uh, having Hagar proceed, that was more or less at their own, at their own, uh, kind of direction.
So, well, they proceeded after you had this discussion that you sort of had an agreement with them, or they proceeded before the discussion?
After our discussion, they continued to, they, they decided to make that transition, it appears.
But you didn't tell them to go ahead at all?
No, we, Andy and I both discussed, we all said that that was a very reasonable approach um, to the solution, and we needed to kind of review these things. So, um, there may have been some miscommunication and they thought they had a yes or no, but, uh, um, again, the direction is there's no increase in additional cost. It's more, um, a swapping of milling versus, um, a shim coat.
Well, I don't know anything about this kind of building things. I know Josh does, but wh- what's the general purpose of the milling?
The general purpose of the milling is not to change the final road elevation. Um, so oftentimes you see milling in-town roads, we have a lot of driveway connections, and you have a road that's in really good shape to begin with. I mean, you don't want to change all the driveway transitions and the drainage patterns um, for what you have. Um, but the, the downfall of that is you do, you remove about an inch of pavement from that, and then you kind of place a new surface on top of that. Um, in this type of road scenario where you don't have a lot of driveways, they're already reworking driveways, there's already plan to uh, fix the aprons and do an overlay for this road to begin with. Um, swapping the milling for, uh, uh, for a shim coat seemed to be more reasonable and get the town more value and more strength to the road.
So milling doesn't enhance the strength of the adherence between the, the, uh, overlay and, uh, the milling or the, uh, sub, sub.
No, it does not. The structure of the road is actually weakened, but it's replaced in theory with the new pavement that you put back on the top.
So, go ahead, Josh.
So I just, I'm just trying to get a hold of this, Andrew, this Josh, um.
Yeah.
When we put this, and we've talked about this milling for probably over five years, and we came to the agreement and we never heard anything prior to this, that this was not the best case scenario for this road. Now, why is it the best case scenario when we put it out to scope and put it out to bid and it was engineered to have the milling? Um, why aren't we going to the, do the milling if, if that was what was engineered?
Yeah, I, I think the first thing is, is there, there's nothing that's really been engineered on this project. Um, this project had the specifications, we provided those. Uh, we looked at the road with some drive-throughs. We've never created any engineering designs on this road. This was one of the projects that we helped the town or tried to help the town uh, get a competitive bid process and work through that pro, the, the, that procedure. Um, we've, we've looked at the road, I've, I've visited probably that road five or six times before we uh, set it out to bid, but it's a three-mile-long road project um, that we were trying to help uh, the town with, without going through and doing a full survey, a full engineering design. Um, so we anticipated that this project is going to change and need a lot of field adjustments as they went through. Um, and one of the things was that milling. So th- this project can still be milling, if the town prefers uh, to have this road milled, it can be milled still. Um, looking at the irregularities, if that road was perfectly flat and there was no irregularities and you could simply run a milling machine down there and you were worried about all the driveway transitions, then that would be the direction we would go. We'd mill that, uh, we'd pull off an inch of pavement and put it back in place. Um, but for this road, since the elevations of the, the finished pavement um, really don't matter an awful lot on those edges. Um, and the fact that the structure, uh, we're trying to increase and enhance, um, it just seemed like uh, it would be the best dollar, uh, to allow them to do that overlay, uh, rather than pull that material off.
Okay, and now that we're getting to this, in the best dollars case scenario, uh, what it was the cost per milling for this job, if it's eleven thousand nine hundred feet, uh, because we took the thirty-two hundred feet off of the rebuild, um, what would the cost per unit cost was three dollars and fifty cents, so what, what would that cost be?
Yeah, so they, they had roughly, um, they had about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of milling built into the project when you break it out uh, on those square foot prices. Um, when you, when you do the numbers in reverse, that gets you about point six uh, inches of pavement, uh, as a, as a substitute to that. So it's, it's, it's a very close dollar-for-dollar transition, or it is a dollar-for-dollar transition uh, to add that additional pavement and milling in there.
So I did some figuring today and just based on, I didn't figure in compaction or whatnot, but it, I figured out the, uh, length and all the formula. Um, they already had a hundred and eighty tons of material for the nine-five mixed into this project for shimmin'.
Yeah.
How many, how many tons are they talking?
Two thousand, I think it's, well, it's right around twelve hundred tons of additional pavement.
So.
At a hundred dollars a ton.
No, I think that one was a hundred and ten.
Well, it's not the nine and a half millimeter. It's the twelve.
You're not using the nine and a half, you're using the twelve?
Right, correct, yeah. It'll be a twelve-inch, a twelve-five shim that'll probably go down.
So you're, you're talking how many, how many tons did you figure? Twelve hundred?
Yeah. So they had a hundred and ten, actually it was a hundred for the twelve and then one-ten for the, the nine and a half millimeter.
And so what are we using the nine and a half for now?
For, for the thin shim, the half-inch, five-inch thick shim that they were doing along the edges as needed.
So we've got nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars worth of nine and a half to use.
Correct. And then, and that will still be added into those low sections. So when we talk, when I talk with Hagar regarding the shimming and they, they kind of threw out that half-inch overall, what, what we determined would be the best suit would be basically to taper that, that shim as needed, uh, to fill in those low voids in the, the low section. So in areas that were missing an inch of pavement through those areas, they would thicken that up along the edge and then kind of taper it down to a half-inch, quarter-inch on the end of it, whatever they could thin that, uh, mix out to.
So are we going to keep track of the truck tickets that we're getting to check the, for the tonnage on this?
Absolutely can do that, absolutely.
Yeah.
They can, they, they should and will, uh, at the request of the town, provide every one of those tickets for us to add up.
I'm, I'm still a little confused about the process, not necessarily the solution here, but so you're saying you, you, you showed up over there and then at this discussion and between you and Hager, you decided to change the approach, is that correct?
We, we thought that that was a reasonable approach, correct.
But was there any discussion about telling us at all? I mean, there was an agreed-upon signed contract that called for milling, and maybe this is a better solution, but still, I, the process seems like you should have come back.
Um, there's, there's a, a, a balance here. So when you do these type of road construction projects, um, you have to make a determination in the field and move forward. Um, with the, the, the cost benefit of milling versus an overlay of a shim with the zero increase in the cost, we, we had discussed that that seemed to make sense and to move forward. Um, Andy was aware that the select board meeting was in a few days. Uh, quite honestly, we didn't, I didn't anticipate that they'd be out there doing an overlay uh, the end of last week. They were talking about filling in the, uh, the reclaimed area to get that going, and it looks like they set those machines and just kept running out a little bit further and have done, you know, a lift on half of that road at this point, or five thousand feet of that road. I, I haven't, I haven't measured it myself, but they've, they've done quite a bit of, of overlay there. So, um, it's very challenging. I think, I think the, the scope needs to be defined as far as this project, and you need to be able to either provide Andy with some, uh, leniency or the, um, to allow him to make this project allow him to help the project move forward. Uh, without that, we shouldn't, I, I've never gone before a select board uh, for construction projects of this nature on a repeated basis during construction. It, it's a, it's a slower process. Um, if things, minor changes are going to have to happen, which we're aware of for this project, that was the intent, everybody knew that. Uh, without doing a full design and clearly identifying each and every little potential item, uh, it was always intended to be kind of a, uh, an adjustment process.
You know, again, I'm a layman here, but three miles of milling is, to me, not a trivial action, but it's not a minor on-the-scene adjustment to me, but again, I'm a layman as far as the constructions process, but I'm more concerned about not having this kind of a situation going forward. If there's a substantial change to the signed agreed contract, I think it has to come to the board before you take action.
Yeah.
But we didn't pay them to do a full investigation before awarding this, right? Which is why we're doing it as, as they go along.
Not sure if I follow what you mean.
I mean, we, we talked about this for Public Works Committee for over five years and, and went down this road and had talked about milling and we're assured that milling in this would work. Um, and I don't know where we went from. Now it's not going to work when we've been told it's going to work and we design a project around it, and yes, it is a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty thousand dollar change order. Uh, so I guess I'd like to see the change order as well, the signed documentation.
Andrew, uh, if I chime in here for a second, Daryl Fraser, how you doing?
Good.
It's weird not seeing you now, I just see your name up there, so.
I know, I, I keep trying to click it on, but, uh, I, I think my, there it is, but, uh.
I, I think the, the board's concern at this point is we understand that there, you know, change work orders and there's, oh, there you go, yeah. Um, you know, the, the, the advent of change work orders and, and the idea that there's, you know, you've got, uh, field expediency and things that need to happen on the field. I think the concern in this particular change is that um, there was a change made in the field possibly before the engineers. Uh, is this a contractor change?
No, it, no, nothing happened before the discussion occurred. So they, they did not proceed with that until we had had that discussion. The disconnect is that that discussion was not brought before the select board to review.
Okay, so this was reviewed before. All right, I'm.
I guess I'm kind of confused. It sounded like, it sounded like it was coming to us, but it already, they just, the contractor went and just did it anyway, after you guys talked about it. That's kind of what I'm getting at. Did the contractor start with engineer in-town approval from Andy and yourself, Andrew, or did the contractor, after your conversation, just say, I know I don't have approval, but I'm going to do it anyway?
We never, we never discussed the, the full review process. It was honestly, it happened so fast on oh goodness, what was it, Wednesday we had those discussions? Uh, we had the discussions on Wednesday and then within two days they had, they had expanded it. So there was honestly no regrouping. I, I was out of the office honestly for, uh, uh, Thursday and Friday due to a death in the family, so there was no kind of regrouping of what happened. We had discussed the solutions, the potential swap, and then it, it, it moved forward.
I think it was Thursday, cause that's the day I drove with them that morning. And then I looked for the, the back of the bid documents you had put together for us to see where the shims were. And I remember saying I didn't answer my phone. It was at left for five that night and Seth had called, and at that point, my guess is he had talked to Andrew, who was away. Um, and then Friday morning, uh, followed up with Seth again, and he said he talked to Andrew. Um, and that they came up with a solution for, you know, what they presented or talked about the day before, which then I sent an email, a message to Andrew and Seth and Vaughn, just to confirm that Andrew did talk with them. Um, in which he said yes, they had had the conversation.
So was the milling scheduled last week, or when was it scheduled?
Machines there when you arrived?
And they had the machines in for the reclaiming. I don't know if they had.
They did a reclamation. I, I, I guess, yeah, to, to expand my, expand my point a little bit, um. I don't see this so much as a change work order because the scope of the work changed. Is it a change work order because the lack of communication and the contractor changed the scope of the work and we're pivoting? I guess is the, is what, uh, what it appears to be. I don't have any problem with a change work order, um, you know, we don't necessarily like having them come in after the fact, but, um, uh, the, uh, uh, yeah, the, the, the milling, I don't know if the milling was planned, oh, but they missed it on the contract.
Did they miss it? And this is the best solution?
Yeah, that, it's, it's really simple. If, if, did they miss it and we're pivoting? That's, it, it, that's, it, it is what it is, but, um, we just want to be clear about that.
I, I, in my conversation, I know this, this project has kind of bounced around. I mean, we had multiple different versions of this. Um, in, with them in the field, trying to get everything done and move forward, I, I understand there was some confusion whether they missed or not, but that, that's a, a pretty substantial line item. And, and quite honestly, probably at the end of the day, not having to buy asphalt from somebody else, if they missed an item, I would think the milling would probably be the, the less expensive option, quite honestly. Um, to kind of fit back into their, their, their project. Um, but, but regardless, I mean, they did include the milling price, they knew they had to mill the road, it was clearly identified in all the bid documents. Um, so whether somebody wasn't thinking of it during a conversation, I, I'm not sure. Um, but it, it was very clear what it, that it had to be milled. Um, I mean, our, our specs, our drawing clearly say that, so I don't believe they missed it, and I don't believe that, um, that they're trying to, to simply make a fix to something. I, I truly believe, looking at the irregularities, this is a conversation that I had had, uh, with Hagar and uh, with Seth and both Vaughn, uh, multiple times going back more than probably six months, uh, when we were looking at road options to that. So this is, this is not something that um, all of a sudden was like, oh crap, we need to do something here. This was something that had been there. Um, and essentially what ended up happening is that they convinced me with the irregularities in the road surface that shimming would be a better solution than milling it. And the town had convinced me that milling was the solution because that's where the, the milling component came from originally. So it's, it's one of those things that you can, you can do either option for a decent road. I don't believe you're losing any anything either way you do it, but I will reiterate, I think with uh, some of the regularities in the road, um, we did remove the worst sections, uh, filling it with asphalt rather than removing it, trying to get it level, um, is, it would be a better solution than, than milling some of those sections.
So, um, where have they put the, uh, where's the overlay going to this point so far? Cause they, they paved Friday and it's all the way up to.
Almost to Woods Lane.
Woods, yeah, it's close to Woods Lane, that's right.
On one side.
On one side, yeah. So we've gone almost to Woods Lane, one side, all right. On one side. Yeah. So we've gone almost to Woods Lane, one side. All right.
And that's just the shim?
That's a shim, sorry. I said overlay, I meant shim. Yeah. And that's the, that, that's currently the half inch shim.
I, I believe so. I, I haven't measured it. I assume that's what that is.
So that, that does meet main DOT specs that will work for us on this project.
Yes, yes. The, the shimmy, as long as they're, I, I, I honestly, I haven't been on site to see them applying, as long as they're tacking that and placing the shim, um, it will be absolutely fine. So, um, there's no real specs as far as the thickness of the shim. Uh, you wanna try to get that, uh, if they are depending on the aggregate size, um, that's, that's how you determine the shim size essentially is how, how small you can place it.
So Andy, Andrew, on the, on the tack coat, uh, having been out there when they're tacking it and I've reading in the scope of the project, the spec, it says that tack should be, remain undisturbed prior to, um, asphalt being placed on the surface. Uh, when you go quite a distance and your traffic control was in one place and one lane of road has been tacked and then everybody starts driving over the length of it. Does that, that doesn't really meet the spec.
They were driving over the tack?
Yeah.
Oh no, that shouldn't happen.
Yeah. So, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put all this money into it and the tack gets applied and it's from, oh, I think when I, it was quite a distance that it had been laid there. I guess I should have taken pictures, but I'm not allowed to stop on these jobs. Um, but I, I mean, if we need to enforce that moving forward, uh, that, that tack coat cannot be disturbed until the asphalt is laid on top.
No, that's, that's, that's absolutely a fact. Yes.
How far? I didn't, I didn't see the tack coat, how?
It was quite a distance from, oh, probably from where they rebuilt all the way up past Castaway Cove.
Okay, yeah.
So, and some other areas as well. So.
Yeah, the potentials there, cause there's, uh, there's not a lot of traffic control down of that.
Yeah.
Band. So it was two lane. Yeah.
So people are driving over the tack coat and you know, it's
That's not good.
Not supposed to be disturbed.
No.
Um.
I, I will definitely have a conversation with both Seth and Vaughn about that. I'll send an email out tonight. Um, making sure that they adhere to that and I will have a conversation with them, uh, in the morning tomorrow about that.
Yeah. And just going, just going back, so we clarify, there's an eight week timetable for this project. Um, for both Belvedere and Egypt Road, uh, in the scope of the spec. Um, with a five hundred dollar fine therein after that eight week time. When did you, when is, I, I look at it as a, as the, as soon as the miller started on Egypt Road is the start date of the project.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the timeline was intended to, for, for each of those roads, the, the eight week, the eight week time process was so that you didn't have a road ripped up for eight weeks, uh, during that process.
Okay. So eight weeks per road or?
Yeah, yeah. You could, as long as they didn't start both roads simultaneously and they haven't touched, uh, Belvedere Road. So, um, a-again, you can read those contracts and, and, and assess them how, how, how you feel the need, but generally speaking, uh, in the projects that, that we manage, uh, it's, it's the time that you start and open the project up. Um, and because they haven't touched, uh, Belvedere Road, it would be applicable to Egypt.
Okay.
I think they're still intending to complete both the projects. Uh, uh, I think they last talked to them as they were looking at doing, uh, Belvedere Road uh, in early June to the, the best of my knowledge. And then the bid form says they would be done, uh, you know, mid to late May for the Egypt and Belvedere, but I think they've tried to push Belvedere right now.
So is it your intent to create a change order to bring the new specs to us?
The, I, I don't, I don't believe there, there's a technical change order for this. So change orders I generally uh, look at as being a change in contract price. Um, we can adjust the, uh, the bid form if you want to see, to see, I'm not, I'm not sure how I would best represent that to you other than, um, reviewing, um, their contract when it comes through. Um, Andy has sent over, uh, all the, the pay requisition so that we can review those and make sure that the town is paying for uh, the services provided. And when there is a change order and truly a change order for value and contract numbers, uh, they're gonna have to spell that out. So ideally what would happen is that there will be a very clear change order provided by Hagar that identifies the milling that they intended to do. Uh, and they offset it with the proposed paving and then we can validate it with the truck tickets uh, and tonnage. And then we would review what they provide, um, and then recommend, um, authorization of that, uh, technically the change in, uh, in, in project, if you will. Um, but again, there shouldn't be a change order associated with this. It'll be just an adjustment to that contract uh, in the numbers and in the, the.
Okay. So this is, you can work within the, uh, the unit pricing, so to speak in this.
Exactly.
In, in this, uh, change. Sorry, go ahead, Tom.
No, I was just gonna say, all right, so there, there is gonna be documentation to reflect what's now being done if we proceed this way versus what was planned to be done. So we have a record that what was, you know, what the product is and what the scope of the, uh, project is.
Yes, it will be done in their, in their, their, the pay requisitions.
But, but we can. As long as we know we're getting equal value in a pricing on paper is equal value and then everything that's promised to us is what we receive via the truck tickets. And if it's less than what we anticipate, then we should be receiving a credit.
A-absolutely. So my, my path between Andy and I, we're gonna, I, I mean, I'm a spreadsheet type guy. We're gonna have spreadsheets set up with everything that was put in the project, all the changes that come, uh, come from this and then we'll kinda quantify everything. So we have uh, real numbers and we'll make sure we ask Hagar plenty of questions throughout the process so that we can clearly understand uh, all of their, uh, their, their potential changes and changes that they request there. So, um, if, they're gonna have to give us the information to make sure that everybody is satisfied. It's not gonna be as simple as here's a pay rec for a hundred thousand dollars, please pay it. We need to know what they're paying, what they're asking for, uh, especially when it comes to any of these deviations from contracts. So we'll, we'll help the town go through that and make sure we're monitoring that and reviewing that before we recommend approval of each of those pay recs.
And as not, as long as we're not, yeah, from what I understand, we're not sacrificing any type of quality or longevity.
No, I, I, I do not, I would not recommend this change if, if I believed we were. Um, again, if we were in town somewhere, it's a different story with a, with a solid road, um, that you just need to get a new surface on. That, that's not the case here. I think this will make a better road.
Okay. So now we've, we've gone to the road and now the road is thicker than what we'd anticipate. And now we get to the shoulder work. Um, there's gonna be more material for the shoulder work going forward, correct?
There will be a little shoulder work along some of the edges that end up with a couple of inches of pavement.
And are we responsible for the additional material that needs to be provided?
Uh, yes, yes. There will be, there will be some costs associated with that adjustment.
How much?
I don't, so the, the road shoulder, so if you have a, a minor road elevation, you know, you have your inch, inch and a half, cause we hadn't planned on um, doing a lot of shoulder work on, on this project due to the milling. Um, so if there's, there's a minor adjustment in some of those areas that were exceeding, you know, an inch, inch and a half, um, you'll need to put a little bit of, of gravel along the edge. You won't have to do it for the entire length. It's just those areas that, you know, get the two inches of asphalt, two and a half inches in some of these locations. Uh, some of it, some of it you, you may not even need to put, uh, shouldering on and some of it you will. So I, I don't have an answer for you. Again, because, um, the asphalt overlay is gonna be fixed to the road. Um, but I can, I can chat with, uh, review this with Hagar because there's some, there's some value in, um, in all of these items and we'll make sure that, uh, they all align. Um, originally there was not gonna be any additional charges for this. This is what, was the premise that was sold, uh, to me uh, when we were reviewing this, um, and Andy. So I wanna check with Hagar to make sure that they had included uh, some of those, uh, edge and shoulder improvements.
Yeah, because you said there's, there was no need for a change order because the price is going to be the same. And now you're saying there might be additional costs.
Well, there'll be additional along the edging. I, I need to review that, uh, better with Hagar, quite honestly.
Well, I thi- I, I think we gotta know that before we decide to go forward.
Well, we're already trapped into the, at least the Woods Lane.
Yeah, sorry. There's already a significant amount of, um, shim down, so, um.
You know, in, part of the milling part was that we didn't have to do the shoulders. Um, so.
Yes, thank you, Josh. I was trying to get my, 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 uh, thoughts, uh, around me here, but Josh took it, uh. So, yeah, if I recall, um, when, when they, they, you guys, or they recommended the milling, um, and of course this is why we, you know, we try to get everything engineered as early on as possible. So we don't see huge, you know, large surprises, but, um, uh, I'm not, uh.
This is not engineered, this is somewhat.
Not throwing you under the bus, Andrew, but I've just, and, um, uh, so we don't see these, uh, you know, uh, all the ancillary changes, um, you know, you've got, we've got one thing that's gonna change that might net out zero. Um, but then you have added material in for, for shoulder work. So, um, that's, it's, it's just the added, the, the added surprises that we try to stay way ahead of. So, um, that, uh, can be, can be a little frustrating. So I apologize if we're throwing the questions at you, but, um, that's, uh, a part of, part of our concern is just, um, yeah, I don't know where I'm going with that. I'm rambling, sorry.
Well, I think it's simple. It just shouldn't be an additional cost to us. If, if the project scope's gonna change like that.
Yeah.
Um, there just shouldn't be an additional cost for that solution.
I'm, that's, yes. You put it simpler than I could.
Yeah, particularly because they proceeded without, you know, the town knowing about it.
Yeah, Daryl?
Oh, yes, Lou, go ahead.
I am not too concerned if the road is better, but I think when something like this happens, we should be informed quicker. Now, it might be that all you have to do is to have Andy and the road committee involved. In other words, in this case, they could have involved Andy, Josh and myself.
And George.
Mm-hmm. And George. Yeah. So perhaps in the future, if something like this comes up, we must insist that we be notified in advance.
Yeah, good point, Lou. Yeah.
Yep.
And I, I think in this, well, in this case, it was more or less Friday.
It was less than 24 hours notice from, you know, when I.
Yeah, and that's, that's where it's happening. So. Yeah, so kinda.
Proceeded on their own by the sounds of it, so.
Yeah, trying to throw all the, all, you know, get the, the, the facts in straight. But yeah, so Lou, it, I, to your point, yeah.
Um, well, I, I, they, they thought that it was going to give us a better road and they wanted to get it done as quickly as possible. So they took the initiative.
Well, I guess, I guess I need help in understanding that pro- that process and how that plays out as the person who's gonna be working with the engineer on any project. Um, realistically, how does that play out if, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, we get in, and Mile Street's a, a good example of the change in the culvert type, um, that was designed. And so, you know, we, we need to do it. We just, we, you know, the contractor gets in there. I'll just use that as an example. Um, to me it's a little more straightforward. The pipes aren't at the elevation we expected to find them at. There was no way they were gonna get clearance on the forty-eight inch culvert to fit under the sewer line. Um, a change had to be made. Trenches dug open, um, part of the culvert removed. Um, how best to proceed? Now, in the field, they talked with the engineer. I was, happened to be there at the time when they make the decision, but, um, wouldn't necessarily normally be, um, just happened to be there. Um, but they make the decision, the engineer consults with the contractor, engineer calls me, I call or email the committee members and then, I guess, and then what? Do we come in and expect to come in and have a meeting? Um, does the committee members represent the select board and say, do they say okay? And then we proceed and just, I'm still learning how, how you wanna integrate these in the field decisions.
Yeah, so it, it, it's a good question and, uh, you, you and I have talked a little bit about it with the, the, you know, um, looking at the two different situations, this situation seemed a little different.
This one's a little different.
And, and I would, yeah, I would know, I'll put you on the spot. Um, I, I don't think any of us are happy how it played out.
Right.
Um, and, and I would ask you, are you satisfied of how it was communicated and how it was played out in a short amount of time? So I don't think any of us are real happy about, um, the short amount of time, the, the, you know, we, I, I, I guess to some extent, we kinda feel like we're in a little bit of a corner here where, um, you know, the, the, the contractor, good or bad, I not, not saying, but made a, a, a change on the fly, looking at the scope, you know, the work, the timeframe, the weather was good and, and, and made a substantial change, you know, at their own, uh, you know, their, their, their own volition, I so, so to speak. We just wanna make sure that was, we didn't have a breakdown of communication, uh, I, I suppose. And Andrew, I was talking to you too, I guess. I was looking at Andy, but I was talking to you.
You know, a twenty foot, twenty foot ride wide road with a culvert issue is a little bit different than a fifteen thousand, one hundred foot road with a, you know, a milling issue, you know.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I, I guess I don't need to be notified on all changes as being a public works committee because I know that things happen in the field on the fly and time is money.
You need to allow some.
Uh, but as long as the volumes of water and whatnot are situated and you can only, you have to adjust to what you have. Um, and obviously down that way with any of the sewer line maps and the water line maps, uh, you know, the greatest because most of it's private. So uh, that's, we kinda rely on that. That's not like a, a big thing key on the other ones, but.
But the Miles one is totally different than this one. This is like actually changing.
A whole scope of a whole.
Exactly.
Roadway.
Well, there's been a few, you know, on this Egypt Road project, now there was a culvert that we were gonna remove, then we decided not to remove it cause it was deep enough that we didn't think it had failed. It wasn't working properly, but didn't think it had failed. There was no signs that the road above it was really, you know, gonna have an issue. Um, and then we ended up at putting a hundred foot culvert in. Um, and it's drained that swamp. You know, to the levels it probably hadn't seen before, for a long time anyways. Um, you know, so that was again, another decision in the field that we had made to do it for the betterment of the project. Um, but didn't, you know, mention to at the following board meeting, um, at the very least. Um, so just how, you know, if we're working within the budget essentially, or within what we know we have available. Um, I still need to know kinda where we, where's that?
But now, there's gonna be additional costs, okay?
Yeah.
But a cover is different than actually changing what you're doing to the road from milling to shimmy. That's like.
It's like putting a, specking out a metal roof for someone's house and then you speck it out and you tell them you're gonna put a metal roof on and you put an asphalt shingle on, you know, kinda similar.
A little different, yeah. Um, Andrew, I guess, you know, the, 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 the big question from the, I'll speak, hopefully not speak to the whole board, but I'll, um, are you satisfied with, uh, you know, this change has been made? Are you satisfied with the communication that was made to you? Um, and, and I mean, we're gonna go along with, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're trusting you to, to, to keep an eye on this. So, um, are you, are you satisfied that this is the way to go and that it was communicated in time for you to make an informed decision?
Um, that, that's a, a multi, uh, point question. Uh, am, am I satisfied by this whole situation?
It's a yes or no.
No, no, it is.
Criminal hearing, you've got thirty seconds.
I, I'm satisfied with the solution and the substitution, or I wouldn't have recommended it and approved what they were proposing. Um, I'm not satisfied that I was, uh, standing outside a, a funeral, uh, talking to Hagar on the phone for an hour, hour and a half back and forth, uh, trying to figure out, um, what we were doing out there. So I'm, I'm not satisfied with that process. No.
Okay. And, and that, that's, that's why I asked that. So we can make sure going forward that the, you communicate to the contractor that we, we all kinda need to be on the same, a reasonable timeframe to make large decisions. I mean, uh, we, 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 we understand change work orders, but uh, or change at work scope, um, but you also need to be able to, to have time to.
Absolutely. I think we all do.
Do that, so.
I think we've learned that the select board needs to be involved in these type of decisions. So it, it varies from every town. Um, and, um.
Well, I, I'll say, I'll say this to that point. It's not that I, I don't think any of us are saying that we need to be involved in all these decisions. It's, we need to make sure, we're, we're trying to make sure that our, the due diligence is done and that our, you know, as you, as our representative, you're, you have time to, uh, look at those changes and make sure they're in the best interest of the town. Um, so it's not so much, we're not asking. Um, so it's not so much, we're not asking for us to come to the, you know, you come to every meeting and ask us, but I just. You know, I, I guess that's my point, to make sure that you're getting the information. If there's a change or a suggestion that you've got time to be able to. To uh, dissect that and make sure it's in the best interest, so.
Yeah, I, I, I had the time. I, the, the situation I was in, I did not impact um, my decision. Um, so I was able to review that. I just want that in advance. We should have had that discussion. We should have been able to think about it. Um, and, and then um, and then have them proceed a day or two later, not that day or that morning.
Yeah, you know, we, this project has a price tag of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents, so. I, I think we, we ought to keep an eye on it here and there, but we don't have to micromanage it. Um, but. There's something of that significant, yeah. At least we ought to say whoa and make sure everybody's on the same page and. Uh, to have somebody just keep going because they wanna keep going really doesn't work for me. So.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could uh, net zero on the changes and.
Yeah, so there should be no additional cost moving forward on this.
So, yeah. All, all I'll add is, this is, uh, I, I agree, there should be net, no increasing costs associated with the swap from milling. To asphalt, but there still will be um, some other things that may arise as we move forward with it, just due to the nature of these. Of both of these two projects, the paving projects. So, but we'll, we'll keep our eye on those. We'll make sure that uh, that we all understand. Uh, these changes as they occur. But, but yes, the goal is to keep it right at that contract, but there may need to be some field adjustments. Uh, kind of moving forward that we haven't uh, quite are, come across yet.
Well, and as an example, I mean, after the winter, Andrew, when you walked the road there, um, and confirmed. You know, some of the shoulder work in the sections there, you had added a couple hundred feet of, of um, more reclamation. Um, following the winter. And so that again, that.
Yeah.
You know, that comes at a pretty substantial cost, you know, when you're adding a couple hundred feet. Um, you know, but again, that was a decision. That the engineer made to be able to help that project. It's not something that would benefit just from putting a. A shim or milling it and, I mean, he felt that's what was needed because it was right at the end of one of the areas that was going to have happen. Um, you know, again, we've had a, a series of change orders and the first bill we had when they did all the ditching and the culvert work. Um, that brought, that'll bring that price up a little bit higher. Um, and I think to his point earlier about it wasn't a fully engineered. Um, project, you know, they helped with the bid specifications in the bid process. Um, but didn't station out the road as you did for say Hodgson Street or Mile Street, right? You didn't have a full. And even a mile street, we're flying a little blind. On Hodgson Street, hopefully it's a little more straightforward. Um, hopefully there's not much ledge up in, up in that section or anything. Um, but without doing core, you know, samples of the, of the road there, you know, we didn't take that effort to do that. Um. You know, so we couldn't be surprised. And so it's a matter of how much prep do we put into these projects before we put them out? How much do we see before we? Get into them and just know that sometimes there's gonna have to be if we don't put all that effort in upfront.
Mm-hmm, along, you know, and, and again, as long as it's, it's, it's communicated amongst the, 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 the three parties, you know, between the contractor and engineering and, and. And yourself, you know, so you, we have, you have time to, you know, I know some stuff happens and you can't let the cover, but some of these bigger changes, as long as you, i- i- if, if we're. I mean, we'll be possibly more comfortable if we know that it's been communicated and there's time to. Yeah, this. Make sure it's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the Egypt road one was not communicated in a, in a timely manner.
Timely fashion, yeah.
Um, that's.
So we just need to be able to work on that, so, yeah, with the, with the contractor, well. Um. Okay. So there's no change work order here. There's no motion.
The, the milling, you know, will be replaced, he said, with a shim at this point, if the board says no. Um, you know, and, and I think that's where I would feel the town needs to sit, is make sure we're getting the same dollar value and. There shouldn't be any additional costs if they decided to change from the milling to the overlay.
Okay.
Oh, and then shoulder work too. I mean.
Right.
Increases the.
Yeah.
Depth of different areas.
This box with shoulder work, so just keep, yeah.
We didn't anticipate, we didn't anticipate this, so that's on them.
But we went with the milling for a reason.
Yeah, we did. But we're pretty well. Backed into a corner on that of it.
We'll see. Keep an eye on everything.
Well, and I think the, the tack is probably the most important part now between the existing surface and the.
Tack and temperature, you know, and Friday's temperature in the morning was a little bit suspect. It's supposed to be fifty degrees. Uh, so you may wanna keep an eye on that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Andrew, Andrew, I don't know if you can communicate with, with them to get a, a more firm schedule, um, instead of a. You know, night note, I, I noticed the night before, um, so that you have a chance to. Um, at least let me know or have someone available to come down and, and kind of follow up on some of those more important specs. Uh, so we do get the product we need.
A- absolutely. I have an email open right now that I'm working on uh, to them. So I will uh, I'll make sure I include that.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any surprises, uh, other than, oh, it, it was gonna rain the night before, now it's not. I mean, they should be able to, with the paving now. Be able to move right along uh, with a decent schedule, uh, with the forecast, you know, ten, fourteen days out. You know, they should be able to.
Plan it, yeah.
Kind of plan this next few pieces.
So, so one thing I have noticed and I'm sure we're gonna hear from the cemetery committee, um, is the road bed. The paved surfaces moved closer to the cemetery. Um, on Egypt Road than it was before because they used to be able to park a vehicle.
Oh.
Alongside, outside. Now the road bed is shifted more towards the cemetery and they won't be able to do that. That's more in the travel lane now.
They do try and shift it away from that ledge there.
I assume so, but I just know that it got shifted quite a bit, so.
But the width is still correct going around.
Width, as far as I know, was still correct.
Yeah.
And we went, one of them says twenty-one feet, it's on says twenty-two, so.
Yeah, there's a few discrepancies throughout the.
I'm hoping everything is twenty-two.
It won't be.
It's not less than twenty-one.
It won't be twenty-two. The majority of it was based on twenty-one, where it was reclaimed, it had twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That was another matter that we were going back and forth on. Um, and it's all at the end of the, you know, when the bids came in back in December, it's all kind of tied to the overall tonnage that was.
Right.
Um, submitted in there. I guess at the end of the day, if, if, if they, if they factored it based on twenty-one feet wide and we didn't catch it when we approved it. And it wanted twenty-two, then any, anything extra above twenty-one's gonna be.
Right.
Extra tonnage, um. At least that was the perspective provided. Um, Andrew, I don't know how you feel about that, but I also think that there were, um, when we measured it. When it was measured, there was plenty of sections, very few that were twenty-two feet. Most of them were trying to meet twenty, twenty-one, nineteen. So there were some sections like through that curve at Rocky Run, we did widen that out a little bit through there, more than twenty-two, um, or more than twenty-one. Um, just to get through that curve and then tapered it back into the existing road width. And then same thing, um, up. Past Lakers, run that cemetery, that curve there with cemetery was, they did try to widen that a little bit, given that they know people kind of take the corner. Um, but had to taper it back into where that new culvert went in, just past that telephone pole. Um, to the existing width. So there's a couple of places where it might be, but for the most part, I think they're gonna try and hold twenty-one uh, through a lot of it. And we should, again, with the tonnage that was provided, be able to, with the weights, with the ton slips, the truck slips, be able to verify what was actually put down, so.
Yeah.
So at least the truck tonnage should start from Friday, correct?
Um, probably before that because the base material was going down before Friday.
About the shim.
Just that, well, yeah, we need to account for all of it, but yeah.
Shim, the shim should definitely be really. Tracked.
Well, and if they're using twelve-five for all of it, then. You know, at the end of the day, we, we'll just.
You'll have your dates on your truck slips anyway.
You'll have the dates, but they ran both that day. I don't know, we'd have to, we just do some quick math and figure out how much it was based, how much of it was overlay, yeah.
Tonnage as well, so. Should be close.
And same thing with the tack, you know, I think there's a unit price for that. So they should just give us how much was used and we'll be able to know if it was enough or, um. The quality is different, you know, once it's put down, but um, I know when they were, when they were, um. Yeah, noticed the same thing, those cars were driving through and.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
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 Well, we need to not have that happen.
No.
Yeah. We'll be peeling it up later, though. Okay. Um.
So Andrew will follow up with them on a better schedule for the foot, finishing up with Egypt Road. Counting for and will account for the tonnage used to make sure we're getting what the value was of what should have been for the milling. Um, presumably at no extra cross, cost of those milling sections. Um.
As well as shoulders.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
And then. Um. Is it good, are we good for that one for now?
I think so, I think so.
Just adding what you said again, as well as the shoulders, because they didn't get us approval to come back and. Make that s- significant or another expense, you know, with the big change that they're trying to make.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on Egypt Road? I think um, Mile Street, you've updated, is that, that's the only update was a culvert mainly?
Yeah, while we were meeting, I figured I'd just throw this one in there. The culvert was a pretty big uh, change from, you know, it was a single thirty-inch culvert. We knew wasn't enough, and so it was gonna be a forty-inch. We scaled it to a forty-eight inch eventually. By the time we got the final bid docs together. Um, and yeah, they had to. Once they saw where the sewer line sat, they thought it would be under the thirty-inch culvert and because it wasn't, you know, there was no way they were gonna squeak under it without putting the outfall in, in. And below the tide line essentially. And so we would have had a lot of saltwater pushing back up in there, a lot of different tides, so. Um, they did decide to do two thirty-inch culverts side by each. There's a pretty good gap, Andrew. I don't know what, if you recall, if there was a. Minimum gap between them, but it's probably three or four, probably three feet anyways in between them, maybe four, just guessing and measure.
Generally, you have to maintain uh, the diameter of the culvert in between them for adequate compaction.
Yep, so there's a pretty good amount of material between the two of them now, but they were able to clear under the sewer line and get that. Um, covered anyways, not, not finished, but covered uh, before Friday, um, at the end of the day, so. Um, I haven't been down there yet today to, to see uh, how it held up, um. But yeah, I think there was one more section of pipe, so we're gonna have to potentially, um, I think they were trying to get the other five sections of the forty-eight inch pipe back uh, with a credit. Essentially for the thirty inches that they bought, um, you know, but we're gonna have to probably eat one section, one twenty-foot section of it. It's at the shop right now. Cause it was in the ground, it was covered and they aren't gonna probably take that one back. Um, so they tried to minimize, hopefully we can minimize the impact on. Get some credit for those, but you know, we got twice as much pipe, different diameter, but twice as much pipe with the second one running, so. There'll be more time involved with the excavation and the bigger trench, more material to go back in, but. Um, don't know what that overall cost will be. This point. Um, then the only other thing to mention, uh, is Andrew did get some numbers on uh, material testing, compaction testing. For Mile Street, um, between the, the company SW Colt, was it SW Colt, I believe? Um.
Yes, SW Colt.
Yeah, between that company's um, efforts to do the testing and um, Andrew's company's time to coordinate and follow up. You know, it's estimated to be about six to eight grand, I believe. Um, and so I thought that was. Something that you would want to see done, um, given the nature of the work down there, basically rebuilding.
We discussed it last minute.
Um, so just make sure, so we'll do, we'll go proceed with that, Andrew. Um, other than that.
The consensus.
Yeah.
So we have room within the budget to be able to do that at the moment anyways, so.
Good, good. Alright, thank you. Um, yeah, just make sure, yeah, you're communicated to and. And uh. Anything else?
No.
Good.
Let's get it over. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That's waiting for it. Second, Tom seconds, any discussions? All those in favor?
Thank you all.
Adjourn.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
You know, we have an audience tonight.
Thank you.
All done, dear.